Oh, that they as the developers would of course require insurance for all of their contractors. This is not a pass the buck. This is not a pass the buck in oh, we require all of our contractors to have insurance. You as the city would of course have the right to inspect all of those documents, verify that yourself. Well, they're saying that all these some insurance to pay as the job. And I'm like, oh, I don't see that. I don't see that point. That's like, to me, that's one of the minimal, like, I mean, who's to say that if they just both queue over about this pack that this whole thing doesn't go in the shit hole and they, you know, after they built fourteen roads? Right? I'm pretty sure we're contractor, sure, this is their risk. That's not a contractor problem, that's a general problem. Okay. Sorry. I keep getting all around all this stuff. Yeah, so we had a general about a meeting with the guy and I think I told him, and I looked him up and that guy, she sent me his contact information. So he sold his clients, his investors, the best deal they could possibly get from this business. Yeah. And she's like, we use them for years and everything else. And positive is that is you have used them for years, you have shot them up, you have compared them. You haven't done any of the things that more people do. You're like, oh, is that the best I can get? Buy a car, here's your room. So I told my, I told my administration, I'm not ready, but I gotta give it to them. I didn't give a whole thing out. She said, okay.
Have a good idea.
Yeah. So.
Thanks, sir.
You did some big stuff, huh?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I've got several.
This new revised?
I do remember how slick it is now.
I have like five or six ways that I can change that. It's like, this is my little, no, but I can, if I wear my big scarf, my big hood, I find it.
Oh, okay.
Mars last day at the cold.
I don't like it.
I don't mind there too.
Yeah.
It's almost script down there as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Forty's will be just.
Yeah.
Those guys.
Called a meeting in order. If everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent reflection, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, can we have roll call?
President Peters?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Mr. Hit?
Here.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Norman? Mr. Stahl?
Present.
And Mr. Hit?
Here.
Okay, we do have a public hearing this evening, so if I could get a motion to exit regular meeting and enter public hearing?
Make a motion to exit a regular meeting and enter into public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Present.
I'm here.
Yes. Ms. Trainer?
I didn't hear her.
I said yes, sorry.
Okay, tonight's public hearing is over ordinance two oh seven dash twenty-four. Is there anybody like to speak on this?
Good evening, council. My name's Wes Smith. I represent the property owners. With me tonight, I have Caleb Bell and Adam Sealy with Ricker and Graden, who are our finance attorneys that have worked up all the documentation. If it's okay with you guys, I might just give like a holistic overview of where we're at on all the various tiffs. Is that okay?
Yep.
So as far as two oh seven twenty-four is concerned, obviously, that's the residential tiff. We had a great meeting with Frost Brown Todd, who's meeting, who's representing the city to give them a holistic overview of all the things that we're working on right now. Have had some other discussions and things are, I think, progressing very well. Regarding the residential tiff, I believe it was Tuesday, we got the support and approval from Madison County, which is one of the steps in the process. So where two oh seven twenty-four is right now, if, if the city was so inclined, I mean, I think we're at this point where it could be voted on. As far as the commercial tiff that we're working on, so there were some questions that came back from the school district. Within the commercial tiff area and within the commercial tiff district, multifamily is considered a commercial use. So the schools brought up a concern that they would be impacted by the multifamily, which rightfully so, they would be impacted by the multifamily. So what we've agreed to do is modify the commercial tiff language so that the school district is made whole, meaning if, if and when a multifamily user would come and the property's not zoned for multifamily right now anyway, we would have to get the property rezoned through the city to allow for that particular use. But if a multifamily use were to ever come, the schools will be made completely whole. So that is an update that we're going to make to that commercial tiff. We had sent that today to, to the city attorney for their review. So that's a, that's an update on that, that concern there. Oh, one other update on the commercial tiff, there was a twenty acre parcel that was inadvertently excluded. It's, let me see, let me get my map here real quick. So these are all the properties that we're talking about. There's a hundred and ten acres right here. The residential tiff covers all of one, ninety acres of parcel two, and then there's twenty acres that is going to be under the commercial tiff. That twenty acres was inadvertently left out of the forty-one tiff. So with the revision that we made for the school district, we added that twenty acres in, which it was supposed to be in there initially anyway. So at this point, we'll have to, you know, upon the blessing of the language, we'll then, by the city attorney, then we'll have to go back to the school district, have them review it, agree to a compensation agreement. That way, everyone's on the same page there. So that's the update on the commercial tiff. A couple, I guess what I would call.
Mr. Smith, when you say city attorney, are you referring to Mrs. Hit or are you?
Mrs. Hit, I'm sorry, yes.
Are you, or you're not referring to?
No, no, yeah, yeah. Not, not outside council. Yep, thank you for that clarification.
You do plan on making sure that outside council doesn't approve any of your amendments?
Well, our, so we don't want to work directly, well, let me put it the other way. We'd rather that get funneled to the outside council from the city. That way, we're not, you know what I mean? We don't want them billing you if you don't want them to review it. So we'll send it to you, to the city for a review. The city can then give it to outside council at that point, if that makes sense. But if you prefer us work directly with them, we can. We're just being respectful of the city and the city's time and the city's money, if that makes sense.
I see. So at this point, your council has not in fact worked directly with our attorneys to make any of our requested modifications to the proposals?
We've made the request, the modification as it relates to the, the school district. The school district, the notice. And then there, I think there's a couple of updates that you were working on for the clarifications and cleanups, correct?
The, I think they're still working through some of the minutia, so I would just respectfully disagree with that we're ready to move forward on any of the tiff legislation at this point in time.
Well, I'm saying if, if, if the city was okay with it, sorry, I misspoke. The city was okay, if and when the city is okay with the document, then it can be voted on, right? So that's, I apologize. And then a couple housekeeping items, so, and I know Caleb has been working with the city's attorney, so miss, miss hit, regarding ordinance two eight twenty-four and resolution two ten dash twenty-four. So Caleb, if I misspeak here, please. So those two items are like first steps of two steps that we have to take. So regarding two eight twenty-four, that's regarding the, the land transfer that has to happen to implement. That has to happen before we can even vote on the commercial tiff. Resolution two ten twenty-four, that's regarding the NCA. And the NCA, basically, that says, that, that item says, you gotta take it to a public hearing. Well, we as a group have already taken that to a public hearing, but there was a miscue where it didn't get voted to say, yes, we vote to take it to public hearing. So if it was, if it's, you know, if the board is okay with this or the council's okay with this, we would ask that two eight twenty-four, which is just the first step, it's not a tiff resolution, is the first step to get to the next step on the tiff resolution for the commercial, to get, have that voted on, and then the resolution two ten twenty-four. Did I misspeak there, Caleb? So that's the update on things, and we look forward to continuing to work with the city and, and moving through these, these complicated and complex documents. So, thank you. Here for any questions?
Any questions right now?
Well, we have two representatives from the other law firm tonight. I don't know if they want to step up and speak or address anything.
They represent, they represent us.
I know that.
Yeah.
But they're here.
Yeah.
They're billing you to be here. If, if they want to step up and, and add anything to the conversation, I think they should do this. This is the public hearing portion of this.
Sure, councilman. I, I think that, I would just, I would echo Wes's statement that the two pieces of legislation that we're requesting council act on today, if possible, are the transfer ordinance that authorizes the property owner to transfer property to the city and for the city to transfer it back. We can't really do anything else with the tiff until that piece is done. So if we don't do it, we'll just be needing to do that as the first step later. So if we never get the first step done, the discussion with the schools and anybody else is kind of irrelevant. So we need to do that. The other item, the resolution on the NCA hearing, you already held the NCA hearing. So that's just the statement that you held the NCA hearing and that you're ratifying that you did it. So neither of those, I would consider neither of those actually substantive pieces of legislation. They're more procedural in nature. Neither of them are a tiff ordinance, so neither of them establish an exemption or create any tax change. So they're just the first steps or steps in the process, the process piece, so that's.
Well, the actual first step was the legislation we did pass.
You did do one, yes, correct.
So that we could send, so we could send the notices out and people would have that knowledge.
That's right.
I'm, I'm a little confused why the school is now coming to the table late, saying that they weren't aware, or they felt, from what I understood, that you represented the city in this matter.
I'm not sure why that confusion existed, but it's, I was able to speak with the school's lawyer and talk through those issues. We had a nice conversation and I don't feel like he has any confusion about anything. I'm aware of other meetings where the superintendent, as well as the mayor, have attended other items. And so I, I'm, I'm personally confident that the schools have been aware of this development for quite some time.
Right, I was in a meeting with you and the superintendent was there.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know where the confusion was that their attorney.
Sure.
Was confused by that. It just seemed like this is coming up kind of late now with this.
And councilman, I think as you can appreciate, these items are not, they're not simple. There are multiple moving pieces and parts.
Without a doubt.
And so I think it's fair to give everybody a little bit of grace as we're working through the process and as people are understanding the different elements of the process. Again, I've, I've had nothing but positive conversations really about this, these ordinances with the schools or, you know, Frost. So I, I think it's been, I think it's been a good conversation with the different players, but it is complicated and it's technical.
Mr. Bell, the other resolution that doesn't involve the property transfer that you're asking us to address this evening is the one that actually establishes the new community authority.
No, it, that, the establishing legislation, I don't believe is on your agenda today.
I think it's combined with the, the notice one. If you look at the resolution, it identifies that the London Gateway New Community Authority is, the petition is sufficient, complies with the requirements of section three forty-nine oh three of the Ohio Revised Code in Formant Substance, and sets a time and place for hearing on the petition and authorizing the notice by publication of such hearings. So they're all kind of rolled in together.
Yeah, that, that's not, that, that piece that you just read is what's called a sufficient, a sufficiency resolution. That's different than the formation legislation. You don't have the formation legislation on your agenda.
Okay.
At least, at least the agenda I saw earlier today.
The attachments to that particular resolution, that would include the petition establishing the NCA, all of the attachments, all of the proposals, all of the, the, the NCA agreement that has all the specific workings of the NCA is not actually an NCA adoption resolution.
No, you, you have to actually, you have to take an ordinance up that forms the NCA, and that's not that, that piece of legislation. That piece of legislation you actually already acted on. In fact, council in December, on December fifth, had the petition and said, we are scheduling a hearing on this petition. So you already did the substance of what's in that resolution. The resolution just wasn't passed on December fifth, and that's why we're asking via your council to submit that resolution to have it.
I, I guess, so.
It's a ratification resolution. All NCA formation requires two pieces of legislation. That's the first, but it's not the second.
So all of the language, literature, petition attachments, schedules, maps, and everything else that's included with that is just for edification?
The statute requires council to make a declaration that the petition is sufficient. So it's a, you have to have the petition for council to say that it's sufficient. You already did, in fact, do that in December. You just didn't write it out in a resolution. You did it by motion. So we're just writing it out by resolution, according to the statute. You, if you, if you look at the legislation, it doesn't say, request the formation or creation of the NCA. That's, that's not what that piece of legislation does.
So not being an attorney, two ten, where it states the petition, that's a separate document?
The petition is that, as the councilwoman was stating, that the document, it's somewhat large. It has all the exhibits and attachments to it. The petition defines, it's almost like the charter of this entity, the community authority. The law, the General Assembly, requires a council to make a declaration that the petition checks the boxes in the statute before you do a hearing. You said that on December fifth, and then you held the hearing in January, so you did all the things. We just don't have a piece of legislation where you have legislated that, yes, you did all the things. That's all this resolution is. There will be a later ordinance which requests the creation of the community authority. That is not what's in front of you, councilman.
Well, the reason why I ask, it just says, whereas the new community district, as described in the petition, is located entirely within, so blah, blah, blah. So I mean, when it's referring to that in this document as the petition.
Yeah.
That's, that's a separate piece itself.
Yeah, this, again, the statute requires council to determine that the petition checks the boxes in the statute. That doesn't mean that you've formed a community authority. It means that you've said, yep, what we have in front of, it's almost like an annexation petition at the county. They say, yep, all the, all the boxes are checked, and then they say, it's annexed. And it's, it's a little bit like that. It's a two-step analysis. Thank you.
Anything further up here? Is there anybody out in the audience that wants, any questions or concerns on ordinance two oh seven dash fourteen or twenty-four? Okay, hearing done. Like to get a motion to exit public hearing and enter back into a regular meeting?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay. Communications and announcements, I just want to let everybody know, we have our Ward Three seat vacant right now. We are taking letters of interest and resume, resumes. We can get those by next Thursday, February twenty-seventh, by four P M. That would be great. That way, I can get those to our fellow council people, and then at our next council meeting, we'll have interviews and then hopefully appoint somebody to that seat for Ward Three. Onto audience concerns. We'll start with Amy Stahl. All right. Clarissa Ramey, you state your name, address for the record, please.
Clarissa Ramey, One Eighty-Eight South Walnut. Okay, so first, I brought another packet for you guys to go over. I wanted to address really quick, hang on. I wanted to address really quick just some of the points. There's a lot of new, or people here that I'm assuming for this issue that we're talking about. So I wanted to talk a little, not the whole entire speech I gave last time, but some of the points last time of what's led up to this new packet. So I am representing London Strawberry Festival, and we were here last time to talk about the layout of the festival and address our concerns. So some of the points were that we wanted to, last time, we thanked you guys for giving us the extra footage down to the tracks. But we wanted to talk about our safety risks for attendees, particularly the elderly and parents with stroller, with strollers. It causes mobility issues with the cords being in the halfway in the middle of the street and putting the bulky boxes over them. It's still, even with those boxes, hard to get people over those who have those mobility issues. Vendor booths that create barriers, making it challenging for officers to monitor the grounds correctly. Another concern was the timeframe, but we had talked about that last time, and I think we resolved that for the most part. The main intersection that was being closed was part of that time thing. Then we talked about how the vendor booths currently, they're, on average, they are eight feet wide with no, and that's with no overhangs. With overhangs, you could add another three to four feet, twelve to fourteen long and twelve to fourteen high. Now, when we are talking about that is because with them going down the center, it's sixty feet with two on each side. It didn't leave the firemen with the correct footage that they would need on the sides. So moving them to the, moving them to the curb does not, it doesn't do that. You now have, I'll have to go through my packet and look, you have thirty-six feet of clear footage for the fire trucks to be able to go down the center. So we had talked about that. So going on to the packet, you guys had asked us for a new layout. So the very first page is your new layout that you have the city's layout, and now you have the one that we would like to do. And it tells you on here, it gives you the two hundred and seventy foot is how long the street would be with the fifteen inters, with the fifteen-foot clearance of intersections. And then with the twelve foot, we did that for overhangs and whatever else they have, if they have tables or whatever they have in front of their food booth. With twelve foot on each side, you still have thirty-six feet of clearance in the middle for emergency vehicles to go through. And then it shows our stage down there at the bottom, and then it shows the two side streets. So that's the layout. The next page, the next page is the email that everyone got. This email was sent from Eve the day after our meeting last time. So in here, she puts in here, this event plan was developed with all of these things. She's talking about four hundred and fifty-nine survey responses, sixty-three downtown business owners, our police chief, our fire chief, all three major downtown festivals, the eighteen-eleven Downtown Association, city administration, and the two city council members. Then she goes on and says, while we have received board support for this plan, with all the above mentioned approving the new layout and event policies, the strawberry festival has stated concerns in the last meeting with them, I'm sorry, the strawberry festival stated concerns in my last meeting with them this week. I did ask where they would feel comfortable with compromise, with a compromise on the layout. The response I received was that they wouldn't ever, for as long as it required, to be down the middle. I just want to point out that is not truly correct. The comment that was, obviously, this is going to be a back and forth, but the comment was made was, when will we stop fighting the city? My response was correct. I will not until we do what is right. But I then said, I'm a team player, this is a board, we are a board, it is not one person that makes this up. If the board decides, hey, enough is enough, let's just go with it, I said I would gladly stop. But until then, no, because it's not what's right. So then we go on down here. And it just goes on to talk about how Circleville Pumpkin Show, Crestview, Yellow Springs, they're not like us. They don't have the funding like we have, so they can't really be compared to us, is what it says. And then they, at the very bottom, it goes on to say that they have made adjustments to try to accommodate to what we are asking and what we need. And there's been texts, emails, phones, meetings with our president and other city council people involved. Your next page that you're going to see is a summary, she puts in here a summary of the fire chief and the police chief. And I want to kind of stop there because I don't. And I want to kind of stop there, because I don't believe that the summary is 100% accurate, because it's not. So, we can read it, that we can go, I want, we can either, we can read one of them and then go on to what their emails actually were. So first, the fire chief says that, she put in here, the summary of the fire chief says, "The proposed layout with vendors positioned down the middle of the street is critical for ensuring adequate access for emergency vehicles." He did not say that it needs to be down the center, we can go to his email, but he did say, "I need adequate spacing for it." He never said it had to be down the center, it had to be on the sides, he just said he needed adequate spacing. I went to the safety meeting where John and, I think it was Andy, is that your name, that were there? And he did end up telling us that adequate spacing number is 18 feet. So then we go on, and she says, "The dimensions, clear spacing, vendor spacing requirements are all designed to accommodate fire apparatus and maintain clear pathways in case of emergency. Overhanging awnings, booths, or jutting into the clear space in cluttering intersections would impede emergency response." Next is the police chief's concerns, he says, "The additional five feet of space between the barricades and booth is essential for foot patrol officers to navigate effectively," that is true, he did say that. "The clear vendor placement is also best practice for large events as it disperses the crowd, mitigating potential risk associated with concentrated gatherings." He never said nothing about concentrated gatherings in his email, never said nothing about how, it says in here, "As such as shootings or vehicle attacks, a curbside layout would funnel attendees into a single area, increasing vulnerability." He doesn't mention anything about that in his email. So, then to go on, at least the email that you guys received and I received. So then to go on, "Beyond safety, this event layout considers the impact on our downtown businesses. They have overwhelmingly expressed their support for the center-of-the-street vendor layout, as it encourages pedestrian traffic to flow past their storefronts. The curbside layout diverts foot traffic away from businesses, hindering customer engagement. Furthermore, the presence of vendor equipment, cables, it's all on the sidewalk, obstructing environments for pedestrians, and they have numerous surveys completed for downtown business owners with these statements." So, I feel like you can't say that for all downtown businesses, because that's not true. There may be some who feel that way, and that is fine, but we, at the very end of your packet, will see, we have reached out to most of them, some of them we did not get a response to, some of them we reached out to them on Facebook, and some of them didn't have them, so we didn't. But the ones that we did reach out to and responded back to us, we have their responses in here, and that is not the case for all of them. So you can't really say that that is what all of them want. As far as the survey goes for the 459 that was done last year, that's pretty irrelevant to this situation right now, because it wasn't about the layout of the festival, it was about, should we move the festival out of downtown? And how do you guys feel about it? It had nothing to do with, is it safer on the curb, do you prefer it on the curb? It had nothing to do with the layout, so that survey is pretty relevant to this situation we're talking about right now.
Clarissa?
Yes.
Dude, my question, we're running out of time here, are these other?
Yep, they're all on there for me as well.
Okay, you can keep going.
So, next, like I said, is the police officer's email. So it will tell you in here, we just summarized, we just read the summary that Eve had posted, had put in that, but this is what he had said. "The main concerns for our street event safety from a law enforcement view are as follows. The intersections are properly closed with ample lighting, lighted barricades, and upgraded barricades," and then he put a link in there, so I'm assuming the barricades that he's talking about. "No vehicular parades in congested pedestrian areas." And this one I did highlight on mine, "Clear path completely through the venue once past barricade closure for a minimum of a utility vehicle." He's saying he needs a clear path, that's the biggest clear path you could have. "Clearly identified vendor business sites for emergency contact after hours, and policy to remove or secure any vulnerable merchandise or items left unattended." So once again, nowhere in there do you see where he says that is funneling people in the center is a problem. And, you guys, we went through that one. So next is Todd Eads, which is the fire chief's email. He says in here, "Having proper spacing to allow the department's vehicles to have access to buildings in the past was not as much of an issue, but now they have more residents who live up above those." So I put beside that, that adequate spacing he's asking for, he did say, "In the safety meeting is 18 feet." Two, he says, "I am not opposed to having festivals in the downtown area, but as much as everyone wants to strive for, I do not think that a uniform approach will work for every event." I 110% agree with him, which is why we're here today arguing that, because he even says, "I do not believe a uniformed approach is what is needed for every event." Why are we trying to do that, then? Because that's exactly what we're trying, you know, you guys are looking at to pass, is making it to where every single festival has to be laid out the exact same way. The times have to be the exact same times as far as closure-wise. The stage has to be exactly where it has to be for every single event. He doesn't agree with that, he even says it, so that was my highlight on that one. Then he says, "As I noticed last year, when vendors were set up in the middle, awnings and other attachments from the trailers extended well into the lane of travel, effectively reducing the size of the lane, further impeding access." That was applicable, I'm sorry, applicable to both events. So he's telling you right there that what happened last year, that we had awnings and other things that were going over into the lane that he's required to have, causing it to where it was not safe for his trucks to go down there. And not only did that happen with strawberry, he said it happened with both events. So it happened with us, and it happened with Rib and Jazz. So, once again, I'm confused on why we're trying to make that same thing happen again when he's telling you it didn't work last year. So then we go on, First and Second Street are not much of a concern, since there's very few apartments up there. Access to the areas, a life safety approach that needs to be secure for the threat of non-emergency traffic. Motorized parade should not be allowed in the festival, unattended vehicles should not be allowed within festival areas. And he said, "Those are my concerns and recommendations. As always, we will work within the perimeter that will be set forth to the best of our abilities." So once again, he's saying he will pretty much work with whatever's there. He's not saying that it has to be a certain way, he said he'll work with whatever's there. My next email in here, that was attached to your guys' email, was from Dave Mars. He said, "I just wanted to take a moment to voice support for the downtown festival layout that you presented. I especially like the layout running down the center of the street, creating corridors on either side. I believe this will serve to direct more festival traffic towards our downtown businesses." So, I wanted to, I did write something small, because I want to address the downtown businesses aspect on this. "While events like the chocolate walk, shop hops, and Old Fashioned Christmas are very important to our local businesses, I feel it's essential that we strike a balance between supporting our businesses and supporting our community. The Strawberry Festival is a longstanding tradition in London, it's a prime example of a community-focused event. It offers free entertainment, fun games, rides, street food, and brings our communities together to create lasting memories. I believe it's critical we prioritize events like this, which foster a sense of community and belonging. I want to emphasize that we value our partnerships with local businesses, and we are committed to working together to ensure everyone's benefits. However, we must also recognize the tireless efforts of volunteers who generously give their time and energy to putting this together. As we move forward, I propose we take a more exclusive, inclusive approach to event planning, considering both the needs of the businesses and the desires of the community. We have chocolate walks, we had shop hops, I don't know if they're still going to be going on, but we had those, and we have Old Fashioned Christmas that is much more towards the businesses. I'm not saying we don't want to work with the businesses, because we 100% do, we just haven't got the opportunity to reach out to them yet, because we are waiting until weather broke to go around and walk to see them. We were waiting until we figured out as a new board how we were going to run things before we go around and talk to them. We 100% want to talk to our downtown businesses, we want to work with them. But I feel like, at the same time, we also need to understand that this is a community event. Yes, we want the businesses to thrive in it as well, but this is also for the community. This is something that they go to, to have a good time, to have that free entertainment, to get out and enjoy themselves. And I feel like we're so focused on the businesses, the businesses, the businesses, but we're not really thinking about the community, and we've had many community people have reached out and said they do not like the layout. If you notice, 90% of the people last year, they ended up gathering right there at that intersection of First and High, because that was the only open area. They don't like the separation, they want to be able to see everything and walk down that lane and not have to go around 1,400 different vendors to get to things. So, like I said, I understand that we want to support our businesses, and we will 100% do that, and we will 100% try that, to have that communication with them, but we also need to think about the community and what they want. This is an event geared towards them to come out and have those memories, and make those, to make those family memories with them, and have that free entertainment. So, my last couple pages here are replies from the businesses that we did reach out to that replied. So we have Little Sprouts Bloom, Hands Custom Creations, Main Wild Salon, Mimi on Main, Express Fitness, Darby View Realty, and Union Street Salon. Little Sprouts Bloom said, she thought the reasoning for placing everyone in the middle was in case of a fire, so fire departments would have easier access to hydrants. If they had a clear path through the middle of the road, I think it would be easier for emergency personnel to come through the middle. Hands Custom Creations said, "Good afternoon, I agree with the vendor setup along the curb, seems like the best option. More vendors and clear path for emergency personnel." Main Wild Salon says, "Hi, I think along the sidewalk sounds great, especially for the safety of everyone. I feel like it would open the festival up more, so I think putting vendors on the sidewalk is a great idea." Mimi on Main said, "Thank you for reaching out, while I understand safety hazards, putting the booths with their back to the businesses sort of closes the businesses out, people walk down the middle of the street and do not visit as much as they did last year, where the vendors' backs were to each other, and it was a much more open feeling. We will go with whatever you decide, obviously, but having vendors' booths to our backs where their storage is just makes it a little unsightly and closes foot traffic to the business." Express Fitness said, "Placement of the vendors is not a huge concern to us. Vendors and Patreons utilize their parking area, and the amounts of trash we've had to pick up at times was concerning. Glad to see new blood involved." I'll let you guys read that, because it mentions names, so if you guys would like to read it, you guys can go on. Darby View Realty says, "I definitely prefer the former setup. I believe the idea was that the new way would allow visitors to have visibility to local businesses, but I don't believe that actually had a result. The festival felt cramped and just looked thrown together. The previous layout gave space for the midway, for people to have space to walk and gather. Forcing Patreons to one side or the other simply wasn't cohesive, and I believe was a deterrent for festival goers." And then our last one is from Union Street, she said, "We do prefer the booths to be down the middle of the street as they block our business when they are by the sidewalk. The Strawberry Festival still did feel a little unsafe and disorganized last year with the changes. The Rib Festival is also set up down the middle of the street, but seems to be well organized. Check with them to see how they strategize their layout." So, we did leave the bad ones in there, so you guys could see them, it was not all of them great. But, I just wanted to point that out, that it's not every business feels that way. You may have some, but you don't have them all feeling that way. And like I said, for the ones that do feel that way, maybe we can go to them and have that chance to talk with them, to see what we can work out, but we also have to understand that this is a community-based event that we hold for them. Not saying we're not willing to work with them, but we also have to take that community part into consideration. Your last page here was the post that was made on to the London, Ohio 1811 Downtown District. That post that was made was taken down very shortly after, but it does say, "Downtown Business Owners Call to Attention. You may remember last year's downtown event survey and the resulting event layout that was placed vendors down the middle of the street, facing their storefronts. This change implemented for safety, and with our feedback in mind, creating a more welcoming and accessible environment for customers that encourage them to visit your storefront while enjoying downtown events. We need your support to keep this successful layout. The City of London has proposed legislation to solidify this open layout for all future downtown events. However, the Strawberry Festival is highly opposed to it, highly opposed and is currently fighting for the old layout, where vendors create their own corridor down the middle of the street, blocking the view of your businesses and creating cluttered sidewalks with excessive wires, chairs, coolers, extension cords, et cetera. This negatively impacts the downtown appearance, the customer experience, and importantly, your business experience during downtown events. The city council needs to hear from you," and then it says to come to city council, which is today. "During the audience concerns portion of the meeting, please share how the new event layout positively impacts your business during downtown events. Currently, the only voices council is hearing from is the Strawberry Festivals. If we want to maintain the improved downtown experience, we need to show up and speak for ourselves." So, I 110% believe this, and so does the rest of the board. It definitely feels like it was a targeted attack towards us, and why I say that is because we are a new group coming together. We're not trying to attack these businesses, we're not trying to, you know, fight them. We haven't had the opportunity to talk to them yet, to try to work with them, so it feels like a definite targeted attack towards us. It feels very unprofessional, it could have came about a whole different way. It was taken down, and it was replaced by another post that says, you know, just come out, support, say what you want, this is what's going on, that's it. This one feels like you're almost telling them what to do, you're almost coaching them into saying, this is why it impacted your business, this is how negative it is, come and tell them that. If they feel that way, they can come to you guys and tell you guys that without the voices from people who are higher up to tell them, this is how negative it was, this is how it impacted you, we don't need that. If they feel that way, they can come to you on their own and say it, they don't need to be coached with it. And that's how this post was made, felt. And when it was posted, we had reached out to the president of the 1811 Downtown Group, and I had had conversations with him. Another person who helps with Strawberry Festival had a conversation with him, and he did say, he agrees, he's taking it down, he posted another one. I don't know exactly who posted the email, or who posted the post, so I don't want to name names, but I'm pretty sure it came from someone from your administration, the city's administration. So I just hope they do better next time by not attacking us and not trying to coach people to say what they want. The post that was replaced was very professional, and it was the post that needed to be posted from the beginning. So those are our concerns, there's our new layout. We went out, we asked what you guys wanted, we went to the city fire chief, we went to the city police, we went to the safety meeting, we got the new layout, we got everything that you guys had asked for. If you have any other questions, or need me to get anything else before the March 6th meeting, I'm sure we can do that.
Well, that was perfect timing, it's 7:15, go ahead, Amy.
Did the fire chief say why he didn't think a uniform approach would be good, or?
Nope, not in his email, he did not say that, he just said, he... Yeah, I did mention the part where I asked him, I did ask him in the safety meeting, if a fire was to happen right now, as we sit here, where are you parking your trucks? He did tell me, in the center of the road, and I said, so what, because he can't park them on the curb, because there's cars there. So I asked him, he said he will be parking his trucks in the center of the road, and I said, okay, so then what is the difference? On June 19th through June 21st, if a fire happens, why can you not do the same thing? Why does it have to be on the curb? To be honest with you, he didn't have an answer, I'm going to be 100% honest. So, yeah. But as far as why he doesn't like it, uniform, I don't know, he didn't say that in his email, he just said he didn't like it. Personally, I think it's because different events are different sizes. Old Fashioned Christmas, Rib and Jazz, and London Strawberry Festival are completely different. From attendees to vendors, to how much of the street is laid out, they're completely different. And trying to make them all fit in one is why we're having this problem we're having now. It's like trying to make a toddler fit into adult and teen sizes, it's not going to work.
Mr. President, well, this is just a comment on that last Facebook... Mr. President, well, I, this is just a comment on that last Facebook post. If, it does say call to action. If this came from the administration asking for a call to action of the downtown business owners to stand opposed to you, I think that's the wrong thing to do, but I don't know who it's from, it doesn't say, so hopefully that's not the case here. Um, thank you for coming in, you guys have stated this, uh, your, your points here. Um, you know, since last year, this has been an ongoing issue. Um, it was going to be hard no matter what, I think.
Yeah.
You know, people were going to, there was going to have to be adjustments made no matter what, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, David Mars. State your name and address for record, please. And you have five minutes, Dave.
Just cut me off when you're ready. Um, David Mars, I live at fifteen sixty, State Route six sixty-five. Um, and I'm also, um, the President of eighteen-eleven Downtown, uh, District, um, and on the Historic Downtown Revitalization Committee. Um, here generally to speak towards this piece of legislation about the downtown festivals. Um, obviously eighteen-eleven, um, puts on events in the downtown, hoping to promote downtown as experience and prevent, um, and to get people to come downtown and just see what the businesses have to offer. So largely, you know, I, I'd say, um, our role is to support the businesses. Um, so like, when you look at the different, um, festivals and, and their approach and what their priorities are, you know, ours is always going to be geared towards the, um, obviously, safety will be first, but we also are here to promote the businesses. So, that's always going to be a, a key to, for us and, but it's not just the businesses, it's, um, the downtown experience as a whole. So, the businesses play a large part of that, but, um, I wouldn't say that, that's the only thing that we are concerned about. Um, but at any rate, in regards to this legislation, um, I did reach out to, um, quite a few business owners, um, because I didn't want to just come and speak out of my own, um, you know, biases and, and I, over the last couple of days, I've spoken to at least ten, um, downtown business owners. Um, and I'd say eight of those, um, felt strongly that, that they have a preference for running the, um, vendor booths through the center of the street. Um, now this is really only affects, um, the Jazz and Rib and Strawberry Festival because our other, our other events don't have that kind of layout and don't have those kinds of vendors, so it, it doesn't really affect most of the events that we put on. Um, so I, I think Strawberry Festival is, um, has a point in that this kind of seems targeted towards them because of the layout, which I think is the largest point of contention. Um, and it, it really affects them the most and they're the only ones that, that don't really comply with this new, um, layout. Um, but again, like, our priority is, is for the businesses and the, the business owners that I spoke with have a preference for running the business, um, running the vendor booths through the center, um, of the street rather than backing them up to the curb. Um, so when they run through the center of the street, it essentially creates two corridors for festival, um, attendees to, to, um, to navigate the festival, um, as opposed to if they back up to the curb, it creates one central corridor. Um, now when it goes through the, when it backs up to the curb and has one central corridor, um, one problem that businesses have is all those cables and hoses and all the things that, um, kind of go behind the, um, infrastructure of the, um, vendors ends up on the sidewalks in front of the businesses. Um, and then the, the vendors booths themselves cut off the, um, storefronts of the, um, businesses. So, they do get isolated by the festival in that way. Um, and it's just, you know, the, the, most of the pa, the traffic, the foot traffic passes through that central corridor. So, um, business owners generally prefer to have, um, that run through the center, um, and then, um, and that, and that gives them better access. This was how the festival operated in twenty twenty-four. Every year before that, um, it would have the, um, the curbside, um, layout as, as it's had in the past, so, um, that's largely what I heard from business owners. Like I said, I talked about ten in the last couple of days and I think at least eight of those had, that was their strong preference. Um, and again, all of them voiced support for the Strawberry Festival. Um, I think it's, it's an amazing event. Um, it is our largest downtown event and they do a great job of organizing it. Um, in, in fact, I, I do want to point out that they have made significant improvements over the last several years. I think every year it has gotten better and, um, and, and I think, in my opinion, the, um, the two corridor layout was part of that improvement last year, so that's just my opinion on the matter. Um, so that's about all I have. I didn't, I, I lost my notes that I was going to bring here, so I'm not super prepared that way, but if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do they have any questions? All right, well, thank you.
Okay. I'm not addressing that. I'm not here to be contentious.
I am.
Sure. We, well, to that point...
You guys can have questions and answers.
To that, to that point, um, you know, that, I came out of a meeting the other day with that post. Um, it didn't quite meet our standards and when I saw it, we, you know, immediately changed it and, um, I felt like the issue was addressed. It was, it was a Facebook post that was up for about an hour, so, um, you know, I apologized for it, it's definitely not, didn't represent our, our views and we changed that. I don't feel like beyond that, we need to be pointing fingers and creating more, more controversy.
Thank you. Up next, we have Raymond Anthony. You can state your name and address for record, please.
Raymond Anthony, five twenty-one Eaton. Last Tuesday, I attended my first Mid-Ohio, uh, Public Caring Meeting. I did not know what to expect, but the way it was handled was very inappropriate. I did have questions that I brought because I wanted some answers. When it came to the public, when it came time for the public to, to address their concerns or their questions, we were all told that you have three minutes and that there would be no response from Mid-Ohio. So, I left that meeting very frustrated with that company. And I don't know if I'll ever attend one again because you're not allowed, you're allowed to voice your concerns or questions, but there's no response back. So with that being said, I want to compliment the City Council here to let the residents of London come to a City Council meeting, speak for a maximum of five minutes, and usually you will get a response from your concern or your questions. So, going forward, last, in the last meeting, there was a Resolution one oh-two-twenty-five. It was to enter into a contract with Streetscan. I did not remember how much money the City Council appropriated for this contract. So that's one of the questions that I have. The other question is I have is, when will it start? And the third question is, who will oversee this project? Will it be the City Council? Will it be the City Administration? Will it be a Department of London? I don't know, but I'd like to know who's going to be responsible to overseeing this, uh, sidewalk assessment.
Well, I believe it was fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, if I remember.
When will it start?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I think Council has to get in contact with Streets, Streetscape, I believe. Um, who will oversee it? That's something we'll have to, I guess, discuss. And then the, when will...
So that, just, so all my questions will be answered later on this year.
Probably sooner than later.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, on to, uh, committee reports, Greg.
Personnel Budget and Finance Committee, normally known as the Finance Committee, met on February the eighteenth. Um, just a quick update, the revenue for the month of January was one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, rounded to the nearest whole dollar, and the expenses were one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. That's not a concern, there's a lot of things that are front-loaded, uh, in the first month of the year. The tax revenue was actually down, it would have seemed like a considerable amount, but if you remember, uh, in December, there was a considerable increase. So it really helped us out in December for last year, it took the numbers up higher than, I think, we thought they were going to go, so it's not concerning on a one-month period for that. There's a number of things that are going to come before Council either tonight or in the future, um, including, uh, appropriating money for, to resurface the basketball and skate park, which we've already talked about, uh, fund transfers, uh, for the police project. There's going to be four pieces, I don't believe they're on tonight, but there's going to be at least four pieces that come forward for that. Um, an abatement from Stanley Electric, it seems like, uh, there was, we're going to re, uh, we have to reappropriate some money because the abatement number was a little bit different, so we changed that. Sanitation truck, that's a big one, I believe that's coming before Council tonight. Uh, eliminating dispatch and, uh, approving a contract from Madison County Sheriff's Office, that comes tonight. Pickleball courts is not on tonight, but that was discussed. Um, the current thought process for that is pickleball courts will be placed on North Walnut, uh, right behind the basketball courts in that area between the softball field and the, the basketball courts. Um, the auditor's going to bring forward some information about having an HR specialist and Elford, the Elford Contract, which we had discussed and approved, that group to be the contractor at risk, which means they're going to manage the project from a, from a certain standpoint for the police department. Um, we actually are going to have language that says what their maximum amount is and that they do that. So all of those things are going to, going to come up. We, um, currently, it looks like the grant is coming through very soon, five million and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the bond's going to be four million and ninety thousand dollars. That's going to be part of what Elford knows the number is. And we moved our meeting, it's going to follow the other two meetings, so that meeting's going to be March eleventh at six-thirty PM, following, uh, whichever, which, which one goes second for you guys?
Safety. Safety meetings, service, uh, safety services first.
Five.
And then, yeah, public service and safety service is second.
Okay, so then we'll follow the safety meeting at six-thirty in the room next door. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Brent?
I attended a public service and a public safety meeting on the eleventh, and I've got three reports. I'll start with the, uh, street department. Plowed and salted, helped the trash department, and worked in the tax department, uh, replaced bulbs in the traffic lights, cement inspections, met with a developer. That's about all I can make out on that. Maybe we can start getting a street maintenance report printed out, like the rest of them. And then, uh, I have the Parks and Rec Committee here. Uh, winter basketball wrapped up, the twenty-sixth of January with the championship games. Spring volleyball registration is open. Uh, the vandal-proof toilet paper dispensers have been installed in Kelling Park. Bathroom and storage room doors are being replaced at Kelling Park. Uh, looking to have two movie nights in the park again this year, with one of them being a carnival-like setup like last year. No dates yet. Uh, pools in the process of getting cloaked, uh, fixed flooring in the main pool building. Uh, this will come out of the Parks and Rec budget. Uh, ordered fifteen new chase loungers for around the pool. Man, that sounds good right now. And, uh, they got some adult programs, ballroom dancing lessons, cornhole league, slow pitch softball. And I have the, uh, Fire Department report, uh, from the Chief Department EMS Training Trauma through Ohio Health. Departmental EMS training canceled from Madison, Madison Health, and then Departmental Fire Training Preplanning. Hosted several students for ride times for tolls and grant paramedic class. Looked over updated EMS protocol, uh, annual preventative maintenance on rescue tools, and helped move furniture for candy cell groups. Busy Fire Department, that's, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Rich?
Attended Safety Service Meeting on, uh, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. All committee members were present. We had five city representatives in attendance. We also had four community members present. I called meeting at, uh, six PM. Minutes of the January fourteenth meeting were approved as written. Uh, we accepted the police report from Sergeant Harris. Uh, Sergeant Davis was also there with him. Um, under the police, I'll just go into some details here real quick. Uh, we discussed, uh, the dispatching situation that we have. Uh, bid come in from Motorola, uh, considerably higher than what it originally was. Uh, it come in at sixty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars higher than what we had previously been given. Um, we currently have three dispatchers. Can't seem to hire anybody, uh, don't worry, just don't want to work or what it is, but county's covering eight shifts as it is right now. They cover every night and one day of the week for us. Um, there was a vote taken on bringing this legislation to Council. There were two committee members for it and one was against. Uh, legislation was approved to come to Council and it is before you tonight. Uh, target date, if it is approved, we're looking at, it's just ballpark figure, but, uh, possibly July first to get it done. Uh, we also discussed, uh, new legislation, which I believe is in front of you tonight, to sell or trade three used police cruisers. Uh, excuse me. We accepted the Fire Department and EMS report, Mr. McDaniel just gave that, and Mr. Stahl will give the police report momentarily. Under New Business, there was legislation to sell or trade three police cruisers. Uh, vote was taken, a three-o vote for legislation to come to Council. As I said, Mr. Stahl is sponsoring. Under Old Business, uh, Mr. Castle met with Ohio Edison in reference to new light poles on Lafayette Street. Uh, Lafayette Street being as wide as it is now and approximate proximity of the poles already there, Ohio Edison feels that they would have to do new infrastructure to accept new poles, which would be very expensive. Uh, on High Street, they feel like that that project would be a possibility and we are waiting a quote on that. Uh, Clarissa Ramey, and I hope I got your name right, uh, spoke about their concerns with the Strawberry Festival. References set up in the middle of the street, there was a question and answer session following. Uh, we did adjourn at seven oh-two. Next Safety Service Committee meeting will take place on March eleventh at six PM in the, uh, conference room next door.
Thank you. Randy?
Yeah, I attended a Public Service Committee meeting and, uh, Mr. Long reported that the Third Ward Project is in process. Uh, I don't know if that's still in the process or if that's done. So, that area that's blocked off, make sure you don't go through there. There's been thirty-two tickets, um, given out for people going through those construction areas, so don't drive through that area if it's blocked off. Uh, Mayor reported that the Durpatcher was being delivered tomorrow, so I assume that's done now. Uh, Safety, uh, Safety Service Director reported that the crosswalks are being installed and they'll be completed this year. Also talked about sanitation, um, and Dan LaValle is acting as temporary superintendent. Um, because of the shortage, uh, there's been difficulties picking up routes in a timely manner. Um, and that's part of the reason for the legislation coming forward later in the meeting regarding getting the new... regarding getting the new truck. The new business, there's legislation coming forward tonight. It's related to those things that were discussed. Talked about pickleball, and that was discussed in finance as well. The next service committee meeting is March eleventh at five P M in the meeting room next door. I also attended the finance committee meeting, but I don't have anything additional to report on that.
All right, thank you. Shannon?
Let's see. I did attend the finance committee meeting. I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. John?
I also attended the safety meeting. And on this, I had the police division, the public safety committee briefing. We had one, we have one open officer position and are currently conducting the process to fill the vacancy. We took possession of the twenty-four Tahoe from the dealer and are waiting for the upfitting to be completed. The year-end summary was completed and submitted to the administration. The workload from twenty twenty-four was similar to the workload experienced in twenty twenty-three as measured by the calls and service and incidents reports. A GPS camera and system obtained by the city administration was placed in the chief's unmarked vehicle and the marked pickup truck by the street department. They continue to work with the architectural firm and engineering firm to complete the design for the new building. Once again, completed, the design is ready to be shared with the public. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Onto city official reports?
I want to have some sweet music to your ears. I'm only going to say two things. It's already getting late, so. But I do want to say that London Middle School, their P T O is really getting going. And they are actually having a Uker, a progressive Uker tournament here Saturday at six P M. So if you've ever played progressive Uker, you don't need a partner. You just come and they'll, you kind of move around and play with different people. And it's just a nice community event, and it'll help raise money for the London Middle School P T O. And then the only other thing I wanted to report was the Rotary Club of London. They gave out their first annual Steve Saltzman Service Above Self First Responder Award. And that actually went to London Police Officers. Officer Fout and Officer Dive for their heroic actions last year with the young child that was, fell in or went into the creek that they jumped in after and was able to save. So I just want to, once again, tell them thank you for what they do for our community. Thank you to all our safety services for keeping us safe. And thank you to the Rotary for giving them that award. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Rex, you have it?
I first would like to personally thank the street department with their assistance with sanitation. The department's been hit hard, both the street and sanitation with flu, having a lot of people out. So they've both been short-staffed. So with Bill being able to help, the sanitation has been greatly appreciated. Also, the, one of the new one-man trucks is completely out of order, cannot be used at all. The street department's looking to see if they can fix it. If not, it's going to have to take a trip to Kentucky to get repaired. So that causes us to then bring in a two-man truck, which again requires help from the street department to get this done. And I did receive a text this evening that I think it's about five till five. They reported that they are now caught up with all, through Thursday, trash is all picked up. So I was glad to hear that. With the holiday and flu and truck being out, it's pretty remarkable being caught up. That's all I got.
Kennedy, you have anything?
I kind of went out of order on the agenda. I forgot to go over minutes before we go to old business. So did everybody get a chance to take a look at February six minutes? Corrections or concerns? All right, all in favor of those minutes?
Aye.
Pose same sign? All right. Onto old business. For sixth reading, ordinance two oh seven dash twenty-four. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance two oh seven two four. Ordinance creating nineteen incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that once made will benefit or serve the parcels in the incentive districts. Requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an incentive district public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, authorizing payments to the London State School District and Tolstoy Career and Technical Centers, and approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of tax increment financing agreement, Tomcat LLC.
Considering the state of discussions between various councils and interested individuals, I propose we leave this on for next reading.
Any other discussion? Onto ordinance two oh eight dash twenty-four. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance two oh eight two four. Ordin, authorizing the City of London, Ohio to accept title and title to certain real property located within the city and immediately transfer title back to the current owner for the purpose of implementing tax increment financing pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section five seven oh nine point four one, dispensing with the requirement that the resolution must be read on three different days pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section seven three one point seventeen A.
Given the state of negotiations between representatives and their attorneys, I suggest we leave this on for the next reading.
Onto ordinance two oh nine dash four. Get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance two oh nine two four. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of London, Madison County, Ohio to be a public purpose pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section five seven oh nine point four one. Declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing TIF agreement, and providing relative authorizations pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Sections five of seven oh nine point four one, point four two, point four three, point eight three two, and eighty-five.
Given the status of communications between various representatives in their council, I would propose that we leave those ordinance on for next reading.
Okay, on to resolution two ten dash twenty-four. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution two ten two four. A resolution determining that petition to establish the London Gateway New Community Authority is sufficient and complies with the requirements of Section three four nine point oh three of the Ohio Vice Code's informant substance in setting the time and place for a hearing on the petition and authorizing the notice by publication of such hearing.
This is the ordinance that we had the public hearing on in December. I think it's probably time to dispatch with this.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
Oh, I think we can go ahead and vote on this one. This was authorizing a public hearing that we held several weeks ago.
Move for adoption.
I can second that.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay, resolution two ten dash twenty-four is passed. Onto second reading, ordinance one eleven dash twenty-five. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one eleven two five and ordinance amending Section eight seven four of the codified ordinances.
So this is in reference to the proposed ordinance related to festivals and events?
I have a question. And this is actually directed towards the administration. You circulated administrative rules governing the festival layout last term, yes? This, this is reiterating what was already a rule of the administration. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we did start that last year, yes.
Okay, but it was.
So it was a function of the administration of if we approve events, if we, how they need to be set up like that. And that's where all this came from.
And that's as part of your authority as the administrative.
Right, we can say no, no festivals downtown.
Or you can say I approve your permit so long as the festival meets these certain layout requirements.
Right, right.
What are you accomplishing by putting this as a, instead of having administrative fiat it, by putting it in as a codified ordinance?
Because there, then there will be a set guideline of how things need to be.
But you have already a set guideline by administrative fiat, do you not?
Right, so, so, you know, we, we got a little bit of pushback, but, and I'm in a weird predicament, right? Before I was on council, before I was a mayor, I helped start the Rib Fest. So we hear things that say, you know, he's doing this because he's with the Rib Fest, right? And so when I take myself out of it and as, and put the mayor hat on, some people don't think I'm putting the mayor hat on. And so that's why we thought, hey, if everybody is uniform and we say this is how we're going to do it, and we went through all of these surveys. And then we had the meeting where myself, who was also representing, you know, I was on the Rib Fest, John was there, he's on council and also was president of the Strawberry Festival. Eve was there, who helps out with downtown Old Fashioned Christmas. And Michael Norman was there. And that's where this came from.
You don't believe that having a set layout for every festival that comes along promotes rigidity?
I think, I think what it promotes is, my eyes, it, one thing it promotes is, you know, nobody's getting special treatment, right? Nobody's getting something special. Oh, well, he's doing this because he knows them and that's his friend or whatever. Also, you know, a big thing was the downtown businesses. And, you know, if you're going to have a festival in downtown, you know, it was thought that you would try to take care of the downtown businesses and let them get as much business as possible. I know that may not be how you guys feel, and that's fine. I think you made that abundantly clear tonight. But, you know, my personal opinion is that if you're going to shut down a road that is comprised of many small businesses, you would want to help them make as much money as possible and give them as many views as you can. If that's not your thought, then why have it on, have it in downtown on the main track? If it's not business friendly.
Is there a problem with having codified set of standards instead of rigidity and rules with regard to parking width and tent location? I'm trying to find another municipal code that actually goes so far as to delineate the location of festival tents, the layout of a festival. I can't find any.
Okay.
I can find standards and guidelines that if you submit this as part of a permit, that your permit needs to address this safety feature to have it reviewed by this.
Yeah, and that's what we did last year. And that's what, that's what.
Well, it went a little further than that because it did have the proposed layout. All festivals shall have this, this kind of, you know, general outline, right?
So, so like I said, we're trying to work through this. I appreciate you guys helping. I appreciate all your guys' input. If, if you guys want to fail this, fail this. Just tell me how to, how to move forward. You know, I'm just one person. I'm thinking that we're trying to do, do something a certain way. If people have other ideas, then let's figure out how we can all come together. If it should be an ordinance, if it should be regulations, if it should be just a free-for-all, whoever puts in an application, we let them shut down fifty-six. Just help give me guidance. That's what I'm asking for. And I think that this was going to give us guidance as an ordinance.
I, I think it is overreach as an ordinance myself personally. I think this would be much better handled through the permitting process. You can take festival layout applications. You can take safety concerns up with the, you know, proposed layouts as they come to you. But it allows, nobody wants to go to the same festival time in and time out with the exact same layout. That strikes me as boring.
Well, and that's up to the, to the people, I see what you're saying. You don't think, well, we, it would be two festivals, but okay.
Well, what if more festivals come along and you've got a layout that says, well, this is where your main tent is and this is where your vendors go? How are we supposed to know which festival it is?
Well, I think in that legislation, it limited, limits it to three total. In that legislation also, if, if, if I'm correct. Because we didn't want to shut down State Route fifty-six ten, twelve times a year.
Yeah, I, I think my, for myself, I agree that there needs to be a set of standards. There needs to be a set of guidelines. They need to be, they need to be uniformly applied, fairly applied. And there needs to be a removal, you know? And if there's a suspicion because of your affiliation with this festival committee, then maybe you're not part of the application approval process.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's fine. So will city council help build those guidelines?
I'd be happy to do that.
I mean, you know, we built the guidelines and, and, you know, they didn't like it, and that's fine. So build the guidelines for me. Help me out. Tell, tell me what you guys think.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that myself personally, I think.
I'll be honest.
John said this much.
I mean, city council can have a work session, knock this thing out, and put the guidelines together for us then.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So Councilwoman Traynor addressed a few of the things that I had questions on. I also could not find any example from other municipalities. I thought maybe if this had already been somewhere that we could find it, maybe we could make some adjustments. But I couldn't find any either. Not that I'm saying we need to form another commission, but, you know, if, if the problem was there's guidelines that aren't well-published or not well-known, or you can't find those, then that's probably what needs to happen for anybody that wants to come in. And so we have written guidelines. This, this is your, and I don't know that there's not because I don't run a festival.
So, so when you, you have to fill out an application and the application is very well-written, even though it's not the way you guys want it to be written, but it's very well-written. It lays it out very well for you guys, and I think you guys would agree with that. And it's on the website, and you can find that, and you can read through that. And if that's how you guys want to move forward, we'll just change that. And when you have to fill your application out, you have to, you know, do X, Y, Z or not do X, Y, Z or whatever you'd like.
So was there some confusion? I mean, this just may be something you need to add. Seems like there was confusion on street closures and who was supposed to do that. And, and, you know, I mean, that, that would be part of that application, you know? If, if we approve that this State Route fifty-six gets closed, it's incumbent upon the festival committee to notify ODOT that it's closed so that, so that the proper signage is put up outside of the city limits as it's been explained. We can only go to the city limits. We can't go beyond that. And there's, there's routing that has to be changed. You know, I mean, that, that would just be one thing to add to that, I think, to make that a better document. But I, again, I don't know. Maybe that's, maybe it's as simple as that, just planning that up some. Thank you.
Well, if you guys have a work session, I think that'll be a valid point. I'll have to look through, I can't remember what it's, what the application says at this time.
Why can't we just amend it to exempt the Strawberry Festival from what you guys are wanting for the other festival? And let this Strawberry Festival do what they need to do?
So here we go. Here, I've got to take my other hat off now, so. But you wouldn't want to do that and, and let them, you know, do what they want and then everybody else, right? I mean, the Rib Fest, yeah, we put our stuff down the middle. But last year with how things were set up, it, it messed us up too. We had to figure out, because we ran some of our craft vendors along the curb and then put tables down the middle. Well, we couldn't do that this year because we had everybody down the middle. So we had to find out a way to keep the line open down the side and put our tables out. So, you know, if this doesn't get passed, it's going to make it easier for the Rib Fest also.
Yeah, because I don't think it's going to be tough to have a one-size-fits-all for, you know, two or three different festivals when they're all, you know, they're unique. So it'll be a tough one.
Well, just let me know when you guys have that work session. Or I, I can just stay out. Actually, it might be easier if I just stay out of it and you. out of, I, actually, it might be easier if I just stay out of it, and you guys come up with what, what you guys think.
Okay. On to Resolution 112-25. I get motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second. Resolution 112-25, a resolution assessing the cost of the removal of high grass and weeds.
This was brought up because of high grass, a lot of people cut out without paying at all. I think they wanted to pay them ahead of time, wasn't that it? Rex? Trying to get people for, they'd sell it or something, you couldn't get the money out of it. And that'll be coming on before long, even snow outside.
Any other discussion? This does have a room seat, as you're posing.
It does, I do.
It does. Okay. Keep that on as well. On to new business, Resolution 113-24.
Mr. President, point of order. Um, I was looking at some, uh, some postings of the agendas for a resident, and for this year, and I noticed that, uh, in our very young council rules, page 4D, it says, "The council agenda and legislation shall be, shall be made available for inspection to council members, members of the public, and the news media no later than 4:30 PM on the Tuesday immediately prior to the regularly scheduled Thursday council meeting. Legislation that does not meet this deadline shall, shall not be considered until the following council meeting." So, actually, there's this new business should not even be read tonight, according to our council rules. I've got the timestamps on it too. I think the, uh, count, I don't think it was posted till 8:36 AM Wednesday.
February 18th is when we got our new business.
We did, yes, but it says it's supposed to be posted for the public and the news media no later than 4:30 on Tuesday, and it wasn't posted for them until 8:36 AM Wednesday morning. So, this new business shouldn't not be read until.
Is there any objection to proceeding with new business despite the rule? We can agree to bend the rules, Mr. McDaniel?
I don't think we're supposed to be bending rules and breaking rules. I, I mean, I wasn't in any oppression that we could break the rules.
Yeah, we'll take a vote to, uh, amend those rules to include new business.
Just for this one occasion, perhaps if there was some delay, um, certainly proceed if there's no objection to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless, is there objection?
I object to breaking the rules, yes.
I can, I can quickly speak about the agenda being posted, if you would like.
Sure.
Um, yes, the agenda I sent, I do not, I did not have access yet to post the agenda since the change with, over with Councilman Norman. So, I've met with Eve twice now, I have access now. So, Eve was being gracious in posting it for me. I did not get the agenda out till 4:18. To you guys, I got the agenda to Eve at 4:27, which I believe is after council hour, which is after state administration hours, she posted it, as soon as she got in the next morning. So, that's, would be my fault, that, because of the changeover with who's running the city website and posting the council agendas.
Well, council submitted these rules, council passed these rules, council can change these rules or bend them as it is fit.
Just need a pro call then? We have a pro call?
Mr. McDaniel?
Is this to bend, to, to break the rules?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Salt?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to have clarification from the law director, but I'm going to go ahead and vote yes, that I want a clarification from the law director by the next council meeting.
Ms.?
On, if we're, I'm not breaking, I'm not breaking the law, but I don't think we are, but I, I want it in writing, so.
It's not a law.
It's just a rule.
Okay. I will. I'll do it.
Mr. Hitt?
Based on the mitigating factors, I vote yes.
Okay. On to, uh, new business, Resolution 113-25. I get motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 113-25, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to enter into contract the county for dispatching services.
I spoke about this earlier. Uh, we want to move our dispatching to the county, so we can have, uh, basically full-time. Um, right now, we have three dispatchers. Uh, if we have somebody call off sick, like at a last minute, uh, it just messes everything up. Um, we've also got some money involved in this, uh, for new equipment, which would be very high. Um, as I said before, it come in $62,786 more than what we were originally looking at. Um, and Chief is, Chief, could I have you come up and just speak a little bit more on this? So, you're right in the ballpark with it, but.
Where do you want me to start? From the beginning with the, the proposal?
Just go ahead and.
This, this came about several months ago. Um, it's always been discussed about why, why we do this, and not do it, and give up control of your dispatch. Currently, the sheriff's office dispatches all 911 emergency calls in the county. They also dispatch all business and regular calls for the sheriff's office and West Jefferson Police Department. West Jefferson just went to this central dispatch, um, late last year. The reason for our, um, change in, in wanting to do this is mostly financial, and also, it, it doesn't affect the efficiency of the department. So, what we're looking at, um, with the new building, and with the, the dispatch equipment that's required, the city's dispatch equipment hasn't been updated for several years. As with any technology, it, it expires its usefulness. It's been out of date since about 2019, where it's not serviceable. So, if it breaks now, we don't have the s- simple system that we currently use, won't be usable. So, that was recommended. You don't move that into the new building. To get the equipment that is recommended today would be about $400,000 just for that equipment. Then you got to look at what we use that equipment for, and how much use we have. Um, we, we don't have the call volume, or the emergency calls, on a routine basis that the 911 center has. So, you're saving that type of, uh, money off the get-go. And with anything else that you deal with today in technology, there's always a user or maintenance fee. That's, right now, estimated $25,000 a year, and you know how those companies always increase, um, cost? So, starting out, you're looking at a little over $400,000 just for the equipment. The, we wouldn't get, in my opinion, $400,000 worth of use out of, when, when you're looking at the number of, uh, administrative business calls, and general service calls that we get. The sheriff's office is set up for that, and the sheriff spoke to me several times about, hey, we do central dispatch, save that money, and put it together. The 911 levy that the county residents pay, including city residents in the county, you all pay that same fee. So, why are we at, asking for an additional burden on the residents in the city that you also have to fund a dispatch center that the county residents utilize for their 911 fee? So, it made sense. The sheriff said, hey, look, I'd like to do this like the rest of the county, and provide city dispatching for free. Then, after he researched a little bit, he realized that some of the equipment costs went up, and his current levy wouldn't have the funds to buy all the equipment extra that he wanted, and he asked that we pay a nominal fee of about, I think it's around $130,000 for the next couple of years, through, till the next levy comes in, and that money's generated. And his budget will be able to handle that, so he'll be dispatching for free. So, you're saving that, you're saving, uh, a couple of, of full-time employee positions, which average around $200,000 a year for two positions. We would keep, or advertise, and, and create two clerk positions, because we still have that administrative workload that needs to be done with public records requests, and walk-in people, and, and, um, all the administrative things that you would normally have an administrative assistant do, which we did not, um, keep. When COVID came around, that position was eliminated, and we have not, um, reestablished that position. So, what we're looking at is a big cost savings to the city, and not any notice that you, you would not notice if you were calling London Police Dispatch Building, or the Sheriff's Office Building. They're, they're answered with the terminology of London Police. They'll transfer you to our phones, just like if, if our dispatcher was, uh, answering the phone now. So, you, the efficiency's not going to be lacking there, once we get all the computer systems, uh, transferred. Does that clarify it, or did I?
I couldn't have said any better myself.
Create any problems?
Looks like there's about a million 373,624,48 saved.
That's a conservative estimate over five years that would be saved. Um, and I think that's a pretty conservative amount. So, I, I know we don't like to just do things just by cost alone, but this makes sense to me. It's, um, it, it can be difficult, because you're changing a lot of, um, your control for the department, and you're affecting some jobs and positions. But, like you mentioned before, we're down to three dispatchers, because one could see what was happening, and, and found another job or employment. So, we're looking at, at that, too, where you're affecting some jobs, but it's not, I, I don't know that, um, any business would have second thoughts about changing, if it was going to save them over a million dollars in a few years. So, we create some issues with trying to re- replace people as they come off. If we were to keep dispatch, and, and you want to keep it as is, and you want us to do it, we've been working with, uh, a skeleton crew, and we are going to need to hire additional help to get it to work the way it should work if we were to keep it. We don't have to worry about that if, if, if it does, if you go along with the, entering the contract with the sheriff's office.
I want to make sure I got that clear. Right now, 911 calls placed inside the city, county's doing that already, right?
Yes, that was, uh, myself and Sheriff Saban worked with that several years ago to get that happening that way. And previously, the 911 equipment in the city dispatch center would receive it. That equipment was outdated through 911, and just cost prohibitive to replace for the number of calls. So, it's just as efficient when the 911 calls ring into the sheriff's office that they jump on the radio and dispatch London Fire, London Police. Um, so that, that operation's been used for, uh, five, six years now.
And then one last thing. I think you reported at Finance, that our phone system keeps track of incoming phone calls, and you reported approximately how many calls?
Just, uh, on the business line there, um, we're, we're averaging about 36 phone uses, uh, per 24-hour period. So, you, you have to look back at, at what you're paying for equipment. Yes, that's what, they're not 911 calls. That doesn't include any 911 calls. It could be, every one, every once in a while, the mayor calls the office instead of calling my number.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's 36 calls, right? And then some of it is saying, hey, do you want to buy tasers off of us from, uh, from somebody, or us calling your office, or?
Only if they dial the 1414 number. If you dial my direct number, or any other officer's direct, it's not counting. Not, not generally, no.
And you're looking at kind of a ballpark target date of July 1st to have this accomplished?
Considering the approval from council to enter a contract takes along, and, and with, um, transferring the software and getting that organized, and then we're going to meet and get this done. I don't want to rush into it to get it done, and not have everything in lined up. We, West Jefferson was due to some issues that they had in their building. They kind of rushed into it, um, and the sheriff's office, and I have talked about how we can do it, and make it go a little smoother than their transition, because of the short notice that they had to get it done. So, yes, I would think July 1st would be a reasonable date.
How long of a time period do you anticipate that transition?
Once we get, um, the software, they've been working on that for some time, uh, trying to get our mobile data computers, so the computers in the cruisers run off of our same software company, but different server. So, we're going to get that CAD system sent over to the sheriff's office server. We can still work off of it, and, um, once that's done, then our cars, when they're dispatched at night by the sheriff's office, will have the regular, um, information that they would get if it was sent through our dispatch center. So, that transition will be.
There's going to be an additional cost for that?
That's covered by the sheriff's office. Uh, that was a minimal cost, um, for them to get that done. So, that's going to happen regardless of what we do with central dispatch here. That had to happen, so when they're dispatching for us, our guys can see it, and, and get the information like they would when we dispatched from our server.
I guess my question is a little more, more pointed. Do we need to take any kind of expedience measures up here, um, whether it's emergency provisions, or suspension of, you know, number of readings?
I, I don't, knowing how council dis, most council dislikes emergencies, um, in this case, I think three readings is sufficient, and you get a good idea of what's going on. I don't have a, an emergency clause needed, I don't think, in this. We're going to still work on things.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President? So, Chief Nickel knows that we're going to agree to disagree on this. He's a former dispatcher in his first career. I'm a former dispatcher for the London Police Department. So, you can take this with a grain of salt, if you'd like. However, I think we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, because we can't hire someone. Why do we want to get rid of three other people, because we can't hire for one position? Um, we have an open shift, we've always had an open shift. It just works out. There's one open shift every week, every year, forever, because there's always one extra shift per week. You cannot divide those numbers, three shifts, by, by seven days. There's always going to be one open shift. That's always been an issue, and there's always been either a part-timer, or a dis, or a police officer that's been assigned to dispatch. I understand it's not the most appropriate way to use your personnel if you assign an officer to dispatch, but it's happened a lot in the past. Um, may not try to do that now. Uh, the higher cost that you've mentioned, I will say this, I said it at Finance, and I'll say it right now publicly, the fact that the, the dollar amount for equipment was not considered when that building was prop- proposed. The nine or $10 million building, whatever we ended up with, the cost for dispatch wasn't considered. So, this had to come back to council. I think it should have been included in that price. It wouldn't seem so scary now, that we're going to have to pay four or $500,000 extra for equipment, when it should have been included there. The 911 equipment that you mentioned that, that was too costly, that 911 should have paid for that. So, we go way back when, and they gave us 911 equipment. Um, but our fire department was dispatched by the sheriff's department, has been ever since we had 911. That I understand, and we should be doing that. But... That I understand, and we should be doing that, but we're not. So for equipment to be outdated, why would we have to pay for that anyway if we were still an answering point for nine-one-one? That should have come out of the nine-one-one funds. If that becomes incumbent upon the city, it shouldn't have been because we had nine-one-one equipment at that time, and it's, we've just gotten away from that. So the more we get away from it, the closer we're, that we're getting to getting rid of quality employees, getting rid of people that have had a job for a long time here. I don't know what the, how long your dispatchers have been there now, but we're now going to send them, we're going to kick them to the curb with the possibility that there's going to be a position or two for clerks that they may take, but we have no idea what that pay is going to be. We don't know if that's going to be something that's going to work out for them. So I say all this just to say that I'm going to stand opposed to this. I'm going to vote no for this, but I needed to get those things out, and I'll probably do it twice more if we have two more readings.
Understood. I, you know, we've shared thoughts and we're going to have to disagree on the efficiency and cost part of it, but I felt it was my job to bring this forward because I couldn't ethically say, hey, I'm just going to spend this extra money, knowing that I could save that money for the taxpayers. And as far as nine-one-one paying for equipment, I started in 79 as a dispatcher and had argument in that jurisdiction with the Sheriff's Office in the city, never changed in all the years, and the sheriff controls the nine-one-one levy, and that's how it all has worked and will probably work till we are gone.
Any other discussion? Okay. On to Resolution 114-25, can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 114-25, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for asphalt for the skate park and basketball courts.
Well, in light of us breaking or changing the rules, we can just change the sponsor on this stuff too. How's that?
I'll present it. This involves, uh, I'll make a motion to amend the sponsor.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, so this is related to the Millenfield, the skateboard park and the basketball court at Cowling and also Merrimack? And so this is for the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids, to enter into contract to get that project completed, and I believe it's fairly timely in order to get that done.
We'd like to get the bid package together and get it out there.
So this is to not exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars?
This is under emergency.
It does happen.
It hasn't hurt.
Oh, I think it was included on your paperwork, right? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 114-25 has passed. On to Resolution 115-25, can I get motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 115-25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we amend the sponsor on that to myself?
Second.
Ms. Trainer?
I wasn't listening. What was the question?
To change the sponsor.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Sorry, I was getting clarification from the law director that we can suspend our own rules and proceed with the new business despite the time limitation, Mr. Eads.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, so this one is related to the basketball court and skateboard park as well to appropriate funds to pay for that project, appropriating one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So just as a clarification, Mr. President, this is more than what was asked for before. However, when this was brought to council last year, instead of funding the entire amount at that time, we agreed to put an additional seventy-five thousand dollars in their account. The rest would be paid for out of the Parks and Rec Fund. This remains the same. It'll just be a little bit bigger bite out of their fund.
So I'll make a motion that we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Clarification, Mr. President, the motion to suspend passed since we're short a member. We had a...
A law director indicates that it's the same percentage, which is three-quarters of a percent, which would take five out of the six member panel.
Okay, just clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution 115-25 has passed. On to Resolution 116-25, can I get motion read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 116-25, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell or trade in property unneeded, obsolete, or unfit for municipal purposes.
I know we talked about cars and trucks wrecked. What else was there? Selling used, is anything?
It's in the legislation.
Well, there's a VIN number in the legislation, yes.
It has 2015 Ford Fusion, 2017 Ford Pickup, or PIU, 2018 Ford PIU, 2016 Ford Utility, 2016 Ford PIU, 2014 Dodge Charger PPV. That's all in the legislation, yes.
It's all from the police department? All these vehicles are? Is the, please?
We don't have that many cars that we're giving away right now, but in the future, there will be a need to transfer some of the cars. What we're looking to do, some of the cars that we have just aren't good for surveillance, and that's what we're looking, trying to get a car for surveillance. The other cars, like the Dodge Charger, we had given to the fire department, they gave it back, so it's still under our use to deal with, and it's been out of use for quite a while. The other, one of those PIUs or Police Interceptor Utilities is the correct name for them, I guess, abbreviation, they're the Ford Explorers. So one of them is the K-9 that we replaced last year when it finally came in and got it outfitted, and then the old Fusion from 15 looks too much like a government car. We really want to keep an unmarked car in its place, but we need to look to get something that is more discreet for our purposes there, and being able to use these cars to trade in and maybe get something like that. The other two on there, one of them is the next up to be replaced, but they're both have different histories, and I don't know which one yet would be the winner to get replaced, but it's going to get replaced once we can get this new one that we just acquired outfitted. And there's a delay of several months now by getting the cars outfitted. So going through the three readings, the time it takes, it's best to have that ability to trade these in because you know I can't go to the dealer and say, hey, I want to get these three cars, and then it'd be six weeks or so before I can do anything. That car's not going to be there. So I want to get ahead of it and put that out there because eventually both of those PIUs that are on that list will be traded in, but one of them will be traded in sooner than the other. Does that make any sense for you?
So your intent is to trade?
If I can. I've been, we had permission to sell a couple, a year or two ago, and we just couldn't find the right car for that price. We traded one off as part of town payment for, not town payment, but as part of the cost savings to one of the other new ones. So that's what we look to do, is eventually trade, and if not, then we'll put it on gov deals and sell it if we don't find a dealer that wants to mess with those old used cruisers.
And we've already approved at the end of last year a vehicle for this year?
Yeah, it was actually last year's budget because we wanted to get it before the end of the year. They had one available, so that vehicle's waiting to be outfitted.
Right.
May not be till late spring before that's outfitted. Once that's outfitted, then I can take another car out of service, and that's one of those two PIUs you see on there. The ones that are ready to go now is the Fusion, the old K-9 car, and the fire department's rejected Charger.
How many vehicles do you have in your fleet right now?
Nine marked and, let's see mine, three unmarked.
So half your fleet may be gone.
Four unmarked, counting the Fusion, I'm sorry, but that one I wasn't counting because we're not, we're hoping to trade it or sell it. It's a little difficult to, like, if you're personally or a business, you'd go out, okay, I want these three and I want this price for them or whatever. I can't do that because I got to get approval, and I need that approval before we can start dealing.
Just look at all the money we'll save on insurance when we get rid of these vehicles.
I, the auditor could tell you, but I don't know how much insurance changes from each vehicle.
That was an issue last year, so.
Okay, any more discussion?
So you'd like to see this suspended, I assume?
Yeah, if you can suspend it, that would just help us run it more like a business.
Has no emergency clause, right?
It does not.
So that would help expedite the process as well? So, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend it to have an emergency clause involved in this legislation.
I'll second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
No.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, so it has been amended?
No. Well, what's the percentage?
Order two.
Order two, it's not a four, it's just for amendment, it's not...
Is it just, oh, that's just, just majority, not super majority?
So I'll make a motion to suspend?
Second.
Mr. Eads?
No.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Okay, there will be no suspension on that one? So this will stay on? Any other discussion? Okay, on to Resolution 117-25, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 117-25, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for a loan.
So this is related to the purchase of a sanitation truck? It would be one person operated with a lift lever as well, and this would authorize the Safety Service Director to apply for a loan, not to exceed four hundred thousand. And this would be slightly smaller truck than the current trucks, correct?
Does the Safety Service Director know who he's going to approach for this loan On the trash truck, do you know who you're going to apply with a loan application to?
I would probably use Michael, I'll reach out to Michael Burns. He's the one that helped us with the fire trucks, getting loans for those, so I'll probably reach out to him.
Is he also the one that helped with the fire department or the police department bond?
Yes, yes. And I'm not sure, did they, was the loan through them for the other trucks? Okay, so I'll check more than one. I'll get whoever can get the best rate, for sure. I think the last one, Ken has said, was through Merchant's Bank, so I'll check with them too.
I think we'll, both of us, we'll check with them, and then we check local, to see if anybody local, give us, you know, any of the money local, and if we're able to get that deal, I'll probably pay fire rate for it.
Any other discussion?
This, did this have an emergency?
No.
No, we don't need that.
Okay.
Well, okay, this will stay on. On to Resolution 118-25, can I get a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 118-25, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to purchase a sanitation truck through the Joint Purchasing Program or advertising for bids and entering into a contract.
So this involves a sanitation truck as well, to either enter, advertise for bids, or go through the Joint Purchasing Program and to enter into contract for purchase of that truck?
So it's my previous one, is it not?
Right, yes, yes. And the Joint Purchasing Program, can you explain that?
There's several groups that has formed a joint purchasing agreement. It's worked through the state of Ohio so that you don't necessarily have to go out for bid. So if they have a program out there with a truck vendor that offers these trucks for sale, it's usually a very competitive price, and we can go ahead and purchase it throughout with, through them without actually putting out the bids. If they don't have that, I tried to go through and look for it, I haven't found anything yet. This will be my first time going through that, trying to find vehicles and so forth. Might require some help from Bill or Glenda's to navigate through that program to find them, but we'll look at it. And I think Mr. Councilman Eads gave me a contact that I want to reach out to about sanitation trucks through them. Bill has a contact also.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, on to your roundtable. John?
Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Very interesting night of conversation, everything, and at one set, which is the most complex I think I've ever seen, and I'm glad people's explained it to us well, and I appreciate all that, and it'll probably come to an end, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
I hope I don't come off as groggy, because I really am not, I'm just tired.
Your input's been very helpful.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Andy?
Uh, the next service committee meeting is March 11th at 5:00 PM in the meeting room next door, and Finance is March 11th, also following Safety Committee meeting.
All the meetings.
Possibly at 6:30, but maybe...
Soon as they get, we'll be there.
As soon as they get done.
The last one might not touch us up.
Well, we'll be there, as soon as they want to clear their seats, we'll take over.
Well, they'll be warm.
We got to rush Rich along.
That's it.
Rich? I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, had some spirited debates tonight. I want to thank Shannon, I want to thank you for doing what you did tonight. As far as the law director, I know I got a little popped there for a second, but, you know, we're not up here doing anything wrong or illegal, and that's why you people... know, we're not up here doing anything wrong or illegal, and that's why you people come in and watch us. That's why you watch us on the screen. We're here, we're open. We're not trying to do anything wrong. We're not trying to do anything illegal or unlawful. That's why we're in front of you. So, but I just wanted to check my base and make sure everything was okay. Thank you, Clarissa, for coming out and speaking tonight. Did a great job. Appreciate your time and your effort with everything you're doing. Mr. Anthony, Mr. Anthony's one of my neighbors. I share the same frustrations with Mid-Ohio that you have. I've called him, I don't even know how many times about trying to find out about getting our hydrants taken care of out there. And the man, I don't remember his name now, Spence Long, he never called me back. So I share your frustrations, but we'll get some answers for you. Safety committee meeting will be at 6:00 PM, March 11th. It's a Tuesday, be in the conference room next door. I want to thank all of our city employees. My God, you know, we've had some rough weather here the last few weeks, and, you know, thank God they get out and do it. You know, and our police officers, our EMS, our firemen, thank God, thank God, thank God, we've got them. As I always say, next time you see a police officer walk up and shake his hand and say thank you, they appreciate that. They don't want anything else, just thank you, and they're great. One thing, my council people tonight, very, very good session, long session, but it was a good one. I just ask the Lord God Almighty to keep on watching over our city, watch over all of us, keep us safe, and keep us well. That's all I got.
Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. And I tried to get the half income tax credit taken through the finance meeting Tuesday, but didn't get enough votes to take it on to council. But I'm exploring a couple of other options. I didn't, it was kind of rough to get through that when the mayor showed up with most of the city hall adamantly opposed to it. Greg, I'd like to thank you for your vote. Like I said, I'm exploring a couple of options that we'll see here in a couple of weeks. I'm good.
Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Anthony's in our audience tonight. He's here most nights. We appreciate that. Want to thank everybody else for showing up tonight. There was a lot of discussion. I think a lot of it, when it goes with the Strawberry Festival, I think, I don't, I agree that, I don't know that council needs to legislate this, and at that point, you wouldn't be here, but then we wouldn't know that there's complaints and possible issues. So I appreciate that. But Mr. Anthony, after the last meeting, did bring up a couple of things. I've mentioned those to our president kind of in passing, and that is, you know, can we make sure, maybe we need new microphones or better microphones. If we have some money, you know, maybe we upgrade the system so people can hear it. And I would agree with him. I've tried to watch some council meetings at home, you know, after the fact, and I've got my volume cranked all the way up and I'm not picking it up. So maybe if we change, there was a discussion about a changeover to some type of a Zoom, maybe that's better. Hopefully it is. Hopefully that's better for everybody if that's what's going to happen. When it comes to the, what Councilman McDaniel's brought up earlier about the rule of getting this, you know, that rule used to be different. That rule used to be legislation had to make it to council. It had to be published by four o'clock on Friday. So council, John, you'll remember this, council members had, they could pick it up on the weekend, and you had four or five days, not less, or not 48 hours to look at it. If it was my choice, we'd go back to that. We'd go back to that. It gives us time to actually look at it, make some phone calls if you need to, do a little research, not kind of get a little bit blindsided. If you don't have the time to look at it, and you walk in and this is the first time you've really had a chance, or maybe even it's, you know, earlier in the day on Thursday, you don't really have the time to look at it and get your answers. You kind of come in a little bit blind. And then I would also agree with Mr. Anthony and you, Mr. Hayes. You know, Mid-Ohio, it's not, I don't know what Mid-Ohio is. I don't know if they're easier to get along with or not. I've been told that it was not, and he's brought that up tonight. However, Mr. President, I think that you could invite Mid-Ohio, the two representatives that represent London, to come and just address council and give us some updates. We've, they've, you know, they've taken over almost a year ago. We haven't had an update since, and I think council would probably like that.
There has been discussion sometime in March.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank everybody for coming out tonight. Also want to, this past month with the committee meetings, it was unfortunate, we didn't have the Zooms scheduled to record those. I guess I kind of failed to make sure that was be on schedule since our council member, Norman resigned. But going forward, those will be scheduled to still be available. Other than that, I got a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Now, Rich, we're going to have a couple more long meetings.